Pardon me, thank you. Item one, public comments and announcements. At this time, we would like to listen to any member of the audience on any subject matter, whether or not that item is on the agenda. All comments are limited to a maximum of four minutes for each speaker, shall be limited to city business or city-related business or matters of general public interest, and shall not include any personal attacks or abusive language. All remarks, all public remarks shall be addressed to the chair. Comments shall not be directed toward individual council members, city staff, or other members of the public. In accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, members may not discuss or take action on any item that has not been posted on the agenda. When your name is called, please come to the podium, state your name and address clearly into the microphone before making your comments. Thank you. And we just have one speaker tonight, Paul Robinson. Paul, make sure the microphone is on, please. I didn't check it.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, Council. My name is Paul Robinson, and I would like to tell you that as a promoter on one of your city-sponsored events, my mind always runs. And I believe there's an opportunity for Seabrook at a venue that may be available and excellent for what I'd like to propose you have an idea to think about is the Main Street. What I see on Main Street is a new idea of a new audience that I don't think is in Seabrook at the moment, and that's the old west-themed Texas honoring cowboys and Texas. Comes from my Texas outlaw challenge mind, but I would call it the Outlaw Corral. And what I would see down on Main Street is a blocked street from noon till 10:00 PM with 50 trail riders. You're familiar with the trail riders from the rodeo, wagons and so forth. I would see a trail ride being staged from 4:00 till 6:00 PM through designated approved streets of Seabrook that all is an invite back to that location for citizens to come to barbecue, western band, casino night type of setting, vendors, and have that Main Street be, you know, a salute to Texas horsepower, if you will. And I won't say it'd be easy, but in 30 minutes, two nights ago, I made three calls. And the first call, I got my 50 riders from a trail box. My second call, I got my western, country and western band that I've used at my other event for the city, excellent entertainment. And the third call was available on a date for the casino that I bring in my previous event where there's, there's a casino. They bring a casino, literally, and they become themed with their dress. So, you know, western wear vendors, all types of vendors, we have the ability to tap into the rodeo and invite vendors down, but really bringing Seabrook to the, to the western side of the theme in your, in your events for the year. So again, set up nine till three, trail ride four till six, barbecue dinner six to eight, outlaw saloon four to 10, that would be a beer tent possibly managed by the Rotary Club or, or one of your clubs in town, the concert from six till 10, charity casino from seven to 10, and then awards type thing at the end. But I see that as an opportunity for that Main Street. I walked it the other day. I know some of the owners of the adjacent property that would allow us to put it all together, and I think that is a theme that isn't in the city at the moment, but that would sell well. I believe the, the riders, riders are like a boat. You have a boat, but you have five or six people on that boat. So 150, 175 hotel rooms for that night pretty easily as far as hot tax and the ability to grow a theme that will grow if we seed it. And I think utilizing that street, the band shell, the market area, and a couple of the other properties, you have the space. So I wanted to leave that with you just as a thought as we're looking at new opportunities for, for events in Seabrook with budget and whatnot. But I think it'd be a lot of work. It would integrate groups in the city to support. You know, I'm a promoter and an advertiser, but I need teams to execute and costs covered. But I think with budget that might be available, you might be interested in looking further into that, and I'd be happy to talk to you later.
Thank you, Paul. Sure, I'll pass that on. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who didn't have an opportunity to sign up who would like to speak? Okay. Thank you. Agenda item two, workshop session, 2.1, discuss draft strategic plan.
Mayor and Council, this was an item that was attached in your agenda packet, and hopefully everyone had an opportunity to go through what Hillary has put together. And I'd like just to open up the floor. I'm not going to go through in complete detail, but would like to see if there's any comments, if this went with what you believed came out of this planning session, if there is anything that needs to be added, taken away, just open it up for general comments. And this will come back formally for you guys to adopt in a more polished format, but I just wanted to put it forth and make sure that you guys cut your eyes on it.
I just noticed that we had already started a couple of the items that were on the strategic plan, the, the signed committee, and there was one other. I don't have my, my thing one open here, so I can't see what my notes were, but it looks like we've already got started, and, and that's a, that's a great start. I think this is a good blueprint for us. Does anybody notice anything that was out of line that we didn't discuss? Everything seems copacetic to move forward. Okay, thank you.
All right. Well, I've kind of moved on to the presentation, so these are just kind of a summary of each one of those. So if there's no major changes on that, I think we'll, we'll get that ready for you guys. And again, we'll bring it back to you one more time in a format that we'll post under our plans documents on the website so it's publicly available. And the plan is we'll come back at least on a quarterly basis before city council to give you guys an update, and at any time that you guys want updates on that, we'll, we'll keep that readily available. So, thank you for looking at that.
All right, item 2.2, thank you. Discussion and comprehensive review of the proposed fiscal budget 2025-2026 annual budget. City council will conduct an in-depth interview, in-depth review and discussion of the proposed fiscal year 2025-26 budget with a focus on all major financial components of the municipal government. This work session will include presentation and valuation of projected revenues and expenditures, departmental funding needs, and strategic priorities to ensure fiscal responsibility and alignment with city goals. Specific areas of discussion will include the item A, general fund, overview of operating revenues and expenditures, department budgets, personnel costs, and other general governmental activities. Item B, enterprise fund, which is a review of the utility fund, including water, wastewater, and sanitation. Item C, special revenue dedicated funds. These are restricted funds such as grants, hotel occupancy tax, other programs, specific funding sources. And item D, the capital improvement program, CIP, review of multi-year infrastructure investments and capital projects, including funding sources.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor and Council, I've got a presentation that I'll run through. You've had the attached draft budget before, on the agenda packet, and also there's a couple of paper formats before you. It's a long presentation. As we get towards the end, we have a number of special budgets, so this is meant to be interactive, even though you're at the dais, so please stop if you have questions. This is not meant to be, have to go through every slide, so if you do have questions, make sure that you stop me. And again, this is draft. We'll talk about where we're at with Harris County, what the next steps are, to let you know that these are not the fight, or could not be the final numbers. They might be, but at some point, we may get a different letter in, and it could be a completely different story. So, let me start off by just giving a few kudos and thanks to the people that really made the bulk of this happen, which is our finance team. Mike and Kat did a ton of work. As you can tell, there's a lot of spreadsheets between the two workbooks. We managed over probably 200 sheets that come together to bring the budget that you have before you. In addition, our ACM, our Assistant City Manager, Sean Landis. These are the directors, and I won't go through individually, but there's a number of different departments, and as you can tell, each one's range on dollar amount, but there is equally probably multiple hats that fall on each one of our directors. So as we get into each one of these things, if there's questions on what these departments do handle, please again, stop us. I'll go through the presentation, but as you can see, all of our directors are available. So if there's specific questions that I'm not familiar with, we'll ask them to come up to the podium and answer those questions for you as well. So our overview, again, you've got many funds that we'll talk about. We've talked about that a little bit in previous presentations, but the biggest is the general fund that we'll focus on tonight. The enterprise fund is the second, and then we'll talk about your debt service fund, your hot fund, your capital funds, crime district, economic development corporation, and special funds. Overall, you as a council will be looking at approximately $52 million worth of budgets tonight. The timeline that we'll be looking at, our, we've already started the process, so we did the CIP meeting that was on June 11th, and we're currently at your workshop number two, which is looking at your general and enterprise funds, and if we get to it, your special funds. We'll be talking about setting a third workshop, and this is all dependent on us getting that certified tax roll back from Harris County. I know some of y'all went to training, and you got probably an earful or a comment or two on Harris County can be a little bit slow on getting us tax records. And Mike and I are usually, Mike sometimes is up here till 2:00 in the morning because we get him at midnight, and he goes into calculation mode. So it's, it's very tight between the time that the 25th is the deadline, and historically, we don't usually get it till about the 29th or the 30th. So it's, it's very close of getting us to the first, which is our 60th per, deadline per the charter. From there, once we have that third workshop, we'll start really looking at the tax rate, and that will really become the basis on which you can really set this budget. We've balanced what's before you tonight, but there's a lot of factors. Again, we're a smaller city, so a plus minus 5% on our tax rolls can make or break a couple of the projects that we've got inserted in there. This is set out in your charter. We will have a public hearing, and we'll have another meeting, and then ultimately, you'll have towards the end of September, a meeting that ordinances will come forward. You'll see the tax rate, you'll see the budget, you'll see the CIP. Then the ordinances will be adopted in one reading, and that will end this fiscal process. So we've still got multiple steps yet to go. I'll start with just general, just kind of laying the foundation. The financial condition of the city overall is in great shape. We're double A by both of our rating companies. We did just go through, and y'all witnessed the audit that was unmodified, which is the highest rating that we can receive. And we are on our 46th year of receiving the award for the certificate achievements in our financial reporting. So the city, I think, is in excellent condition. We'll talk about how healthy our reserves are, and our team has done an incredible job, given that we do have some flat revenues this year of trying to be wise with the expenditure and the projects that they're working on and the asks that they're asking for. So as we dive into general fund revenues, the majority of your revenue for the general fund, as you can see, is property tax. So 44.6% is property tax, and 15.4% is sales tax. This varies as you look across the state. Every city is a little bit different. Some are run by sales tax and very little on property tax, but for us, it is property tax, and then we've got a number of different, excuse me, other funding sources over there to the left. But these are the two primary ones that when we start to look at our forecasts, which is the first step we do, is where's the revenue going to come from and how's it going to change? That's what we predominantly look at. So let's talk about property tax. We typically do not collect 100% of all of the property tax that we calculate, so we go ahead and factor in 2% delta that we know we're not going to do that much. Then you have delinquents. So every month, Mike will get a report from Harris County, and it will show protest, it will show delinquents. So there's a lot of plus and minus from the moment that you approve this budget to the moment we close that budget out. So we may not get everything, and then we may get a lot of changes. Delinquents come in from the previous year, so there's a lot of variables on that. Sales tax, we'll look at a little bit more on the sales tax side, but we've been budgeting pretty aggressively for the last two years, and we didn't quite meet that mark. So we went and made the assumption to put in higher percentages this year. I'm opting to get more conservative on the sales tax that we're putting in for the fiscal year 26. However, as you'll see in a minute, that doesn't necessarily mean our trend is trending down. We're just truing up our actual budget to what our actuals were and kind of calming down our aggressive percentage. Charges for services, we'll dive into the increase that we're proposing in that specific area. Before we get started, this is just a snapshot that we show every year, and it's just the tax bill that your homeowners will typically get and how that's chopped up between the different taxing entities. Obviously, your school district is your highest percentage, and for Seabrook, that comes in about 47.7%. The city is the next one at 22.4%, and then there's a number of other taxing entities that you see on your, your tax statement, but that just kind of shows on the breakout what that looks like. So the current rate for the city of Seabrook is just over 45 cents. That's per $100 of valuation for that 22.4% of the property tax bill. We usually get council and public for that matter that are very curious and would like to compare cities. So this is a running comparison that we do every year as well, just to kind of let you know numerically-wise how we stand up against our neighbors in this area. Again, not apples to apples, every city, Mike's done a good job with a lot of his presentations of kind of bringing home the thought that a lot of these cities have different makeups, just like some are property tax, population comes into factor, industrial, a lot of those things come into factor. But it's just a good reference point of where Seabrook stands numerically with some of, again, with our neighbors. For those of you that are new, this is a good historical chart of our rates. This is a good indication of what you'll hear me say, the seesaw. The seesaw is when property values go up, the tax rate's naturally going to come down, and we'll see that a little bit in our forecast here. But taking it all the way back to 2013, we were just over 65 cents. Our evaluations now are over $2 billion. We were under $1 billion way back then. So again, you can kind of see proportionally how this formula will work. And so we're currently at 45 cents, but that just kind of gives you a historical indication of where we came from. Again, another depiction of that historical, we'll focus on the last one, which is your 26 projected. We have an estimated letter that came into the finance team, and this is how we're calculating tonight's revenue stream. This number here, when we talk about the $2 billion in valuations, this is the raw, the gross amount of all values within the city of Seabrook. When we reached the $1 billion mark, that was pretty sizable for our city. Now we've reached the $2 billion mark, and that's another sizable milestone. However, when you move down, there are exemptions that are built in. Just when you look at your property tax bill, you see a number of exemptions on that property tax bill. After exemptions are taken into account, the net value is what we're able to apply the city's tax rate to. So right now, the estimated taxable amount would be 1.9. What that equates to is, this is the numerical, so we talked about being high in our highest category for revenue being property tax. So these are the dollar amounts that we derive from property tax. So we were at a little over $7 million in projections for setting our budget in '25, and we are now setting our budget right now just under $7 million at 6.9.
Hey, Gail. Can I go ahead and ask a question?
Sure.
So I'm looking, I'm looking at the, if you go back a few slides, I know in, like, the state, they passed SB4 to potentially increase homestead by 140, or to 140 or 150 for seniors. So has those, have those like potential figures? I know we're voting on it in November, and they're saying they might go back on that.
So those are for school districts, school districts.
The homestead exemption?
Right.
Okay.
Right. So ours, ours is not tied to that, thankfully, are we?
Okay, so we won't be impacted?
We would be on the street corner with the, no, no. So it's not in there, thank goodness, but that's only for school district. Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, great question. COVID and the online sales were actually our friends, and we went through the 146 expansion. We've talked about this. We put away $800,000. When we had so many brick and mortars on the road going down, it was a scary thought. So the $800,000 was stuck aside with the anticipation that we would start to see these years dip, and we actually saw the reverse. So we were in good shape through the expansion project. We've got a little bit of a dip that has happened in '24 after we got the actuals in, and we've recovered, and so we'll look at what we're projecting on that, but we're going pretty flat. Last year, we came in at just 2.5, so I've just dropped it a few thousand dollars on this just to make sure that we don't over-exaggerate any kind of percentage on that. But again, there's, this chart that I like to look at, which is, this is from the state's database. When we get sales tax payments in, this is all open data, and you kind of see information and draw from our region, which is, again, just a good comparison tool. And this is showing, when you see the highlighted on Seabrook there, the 7.24% is taking our July payment, and the July sales tax numbers are actually two months behind. So when we get the check, it's from really May, I think. So we're about two months behind as far as the state. So we're running great on this last payment, 7.24% when you compare payment to payment in July. And then, as you can move over and see year-to-date, we're still trending in a really great direction, 7.94 year-over-year as far as our year-to-date total. So it's, it looks good as far as the trend line. We just were a little aggressive when we set the budget last year. So again, you're seeing that negative four point, negative 4%, however, we're doing really good as far as the actual payments that are coming in. This is just a couple of highlights that I want to roll through before we get into every single different department, but overall, we have talked about the $2 billion valuations from Harris County. We'll talk a lot about predominantly this budget being personnel-driven. The majority of all of our expenses are personnel when it comes to general fund. So everything that we look at has to do usually with cost of living, making sure that our employees are staying at market with our competitive cities, and then police officers are always a big topic every year. So some of the highlights that we've tackled with the budget before you right now is we were not able to squeeze any new positions in our general fund. We did put a 1.5% COLA, or cost of living adjustment, across all the employees minus the police officers. We did a 3% market adjustment on that particular pay grade just for the police officers. The 2.5% is for civilian employees, and that's a STEP program. So whatever the anniversary month that they were hired, and that was their anniversary date, six months later, becomes their reoccurring annual STEP anniversary. So we have a pay matrix that, that month, every year, if council approves per this budget process, the STEP, then they'll move through their pay matrix, another two and a half, or in the case for police officers, 3%. So that keeps them progressing in their pay matrices. And then health insurance, you guys saw that before you, that was a pretty hefty increase. Meeting with our area cities, unfortunately, I hate to say it, but Seabrook was on the highest end probably of the health insurance increases. So that one, obviously, it hurt our budget quite a bit, so we were not able to squeeze in a whole lot more than what we've kind of put on the highlight sheets. We also had a little bit of a ding on our property liability insurance as well for a blended 7% increase.
Hey, Gail.
Uh huh.
So for PD this year, you're looking at a 3% market adjustment, and then on top of that, the 3% STEP, correct?
Correct. So we'll start with the reserves. Again, you guys have the detailed sheets in your packets, but this, at the bottom of your general fund sheet, will show the balance of your savings or reserves is what we call it. So we do have per the charter, your 25% emergency reserve that's required, and that equates to roughly 3.7 million. This is where we also do the carve-out for the 1.6 million that was from the port, and that's a committed fund, and that left 4.5 million in unreserved funds for an overall $9.8 million reserve. So there's been a lot of discussion on this. This is usually where we get some comments from people, why are we running so healthy? Why is there so much in the reserve? And with a lot of the conversations on disaster planning and recognition that we're not quite sure what happens with FEMA, being a coastal community, with some of the issues that we've had in the past with just going through IC, back then, it was roughly probably 2.3 million right out of the chute on DeBree, and you don't get that money back from FEMA for, where's my expert, Kevin, for at least six months, right? And that, so everything's electronic, everything was paper back then, it was months and months, but you're, as a municipality, responsible for starting to write those checks right after a disaster. So this reserve is extremely important, so definitely want to entertain this if you guys have any questions, but just wanted to interject that we are healthy, but I believe that we're healthy. to interject that we are healthy, but I believe that we're healthy in a good way in case that we ever get hit while FEMA's trying to figure out what FEMA's doing in the future. So being a coastal community, I feel like we're in a completely separate, different range from, you know, well, I say that disasters are happening everywhere. So I think it's a good policy for a city just to be ready when disaster strikes, and your reserves are healthy in that way. This will show you just sort of a pie chart, what I mentioned earlier. So when we're looking at our general fund, if you break that into percentages, you can see that we're just over 70% this year in personnel costs, closely behind with our services and then supplies. This is a depiction of the different departments, and I'll tell you, if you go and look at any other municipal budget, this is not, it looks funny, but it's not out of the norm at all. So your public safety is your number-one expense, and this is a typical ratio of what you'll see to that. So it's just a good visual of what you're looking at through your sheets, but the majority of our expenses are PD-related. This is a note, really just a historical note for me. We were able to, I believe, squeeze in the 3% that we're looking at this year because of a payroll adjustment. And let me explain this for just accounting purposes. We have to look at the exact October 1 to September 30. However, our payroll cut check dates do not align with that. So our payroll periods may flood over into one fiscal, bleed over into another at the end of the year. So we true-up October 1 to 9/30. And sometimes that can ding us to where we actually have to add a little bit more into the personnel. So if you're a $50,000 employee, you may have to be 50,600 because we need 600 to back, back in for those dates specifically. So this is a payroll adjustment, and this year, it ended up yielding us a credit. So we actually got 11 days that we were able to get a credit back into this. So this was, hasn't happened in a really long time, and by doing this and shoring it up, we were able to squeeze in a little bit more unexpectedly. So it was a blessing, but just wanted to, as we go through these departmental budgets and all these percentages that I'm throwing at you guys, you may look at some of them and see a decrease or a flat and say, how are you doing the increases if I see it flat? This is how, so. All right. So this is the time that we'll start to, at a very high level, we'll go through each one of your department sheets. So if you guys have any questions, we'll start off with yours that has a lot of the associated expenses. This is legislative. This is where the city secretary also holds her expenditure cost centers. But there's a couple of different things in here I did want to kind of stop, since we've had some questions here recently, and make sure you're aware of what's in there if you have any questions. And we'll talk a little bit about some upcoming expenses and how those might need to be accounted for, for each one of y'all specifically. So this, we'll start at the first bullet point, your council reimbursement funds that are intended to be reimbursement for your training and events. Right now, we don't have anything specifically in writing, but we've been putting that $13,200 that you see there traditionally rolled over. We don't have them separated out, but we are having, which is a good thing, all of you guys are going to more training, more events, which is wonderful. We also have the TML training that's coming up in October. So Rachel was gracious enough to do a quick calculation, and I think it's a little over $1,000 for those of you who may want to go to that. So with that said, you know, $13,200 would either be council making a decision individually that your 1,700 is a good number, or if you would like to discuss expanding that in any form or fashion, given your experience thus far with training, the TML expenditures. So I'll stop talking for just a moment and just kind of see if you guys want to elaborate on your training budgets.
Anything left over from 2025 just goes back into the general fund, is that?
Right. So once we close those books, it just rolls into reserves, and then you start a new budget.
Okay. And then obviously, we'll have as many as three new council members coming on in less than a year. So I think we just need to keep that in mind, too, for this purpose.
The calculations, Rachel, that you had, that's per person, right?
Yes, the calculations, that it has been about 1,700 and up to 2,400 for the mayor, since he generally attended more things. So council had 1,700. That's just kind of how it was broken down when you took the total.
It wasn't specific.
It was really a pooled amount.
I meant on the October that Gail was mentioning, you said it'd be $1,000. That's per person, right?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry, I wasn't specific on that. Is this where we decide what we're doing?
So I think if there's any question on if you do not feel comfortable, I think with new people coming on, it may be that the 1,700 is a hard line. So the bucket approach that we've just had some people that didn't attend training, and another council member could beg, borrow, and steal from another county, I think that may get a little more restricted. So the $1,700, the first question is, do y'all feel comfortable with 1,700? Is there any additional funds for just TML conference or just one more training in addition to the 1,700? Is there anything that you want to set or discuss of what that cost may look like?
Okay, I see. Is anyone planning on going to the October training? And myself, Summer, Jared?
I will not be. We have a previous engagement.
Oh, maybe. Can't say for sure.
Probably maybe.
So, Gail, is the discussion to maybe be a little more consistent and locked down on the dollar amount allocated per council member? Is that kind of the?
I do. I think once the note of having new members come in, I think with some of the training that everybody took advantage of, we're seeing that the 1,700 doesn't last very long if you're going to do the TML on top of it. So the discussion either needs to be that y'all would want to raise your overall stipends individually, or make some kind of concession for a TML pool separately that wouldn't affect your 1,700.
Might be in favor of that.
Yeah, I think that's a good angle, is to make a TML separately.
I was just going to say, we pick and choose. I mean, we have an allocated amount of funds, and we choose which events we want to apply those funds towards.
Have we, has there been price increases? Has this been a level amount over a number of years, but there's been price increases in events? Is that the situation?
I can speak to that a bit, yes. Events have gone up, and so has mileage. Mileage definitely has gone up over the last two to three years, for sure. But yeah, their expenses for meals, these things just tend to increase, so. And I'm not exactly sure how long that amount has been budgeted.
So.
That was my next question.
Yeah, so we did a little bit, and I apologize, I didn't bring the minutes. When we, we were talking about this, we did dive in the minutes. It looked like several, several years ago, there was a really tight budget year, and council took it upon themselves to cut their stipends that year, and it never went back. So I don't, I don't know exactly, but it was, I want to say they even took 50%. So we may be looking at 50% of what, I think it was over 10 years ago when that happened, so. And it, so there was a higher amount some time ago.
Yeah, I think it was back when Gary Mack was on council, was when they had, they had voted to do away with the monthly stipends for a council member.
At least 10 years ago.
I think it was, it was a budgetary issue, was like, you know, they chose to withhold their monthly stipends to be able to help the city with the overall budget. So that would have been at least 10 years ago.
Yeah.
I do think we need to increase it, or do the TML separate, because really, what interests me the most as a new councilperson is the TML training.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's pretty important.
I mean, to be good stewards of the taxpayer money, I think it would make sense, in my opinion, for us, if we have to increase it a little bit, you know, to kind of like COLA, right? Everything has gone up, so we increase it, but this X amount is allocated per council member. So we choose to go to TML, then maybe we miss a different event. And I think that's fair to the taxpayers and fair to us in regard to our training as well.
Yeah, that's fair. I think we do need to increase it a little bit, though, to account for inflation, but I'm agreeing.
Yeah, it's been 10 years.
Yeah, and I think, you know, this council's done a really good job. I think with the requirement to do new election training, we're finding, I think with some of the stuff that came in this week, it's, you know, if you go out of town, it can be roughly, you know, five, $500 to $600. So, you know, if you're looking at one good newly-elected training out of town, plus the count, or the TML, then, you know, other things added on to that, that would probably be a good starting point if y'all want to raise that. And we could, we could do that calculation. Again, these are preliminary tax rules. We may have some room to squeeze some stuff in, so if that's a general direction, we could plug in a preliminary increase for the inflation, and then we may be coming back to y'all like the 10-years-ago council and slicing some stuff, but.
Something that, that's also the thing, too. Like, if we choose to increase ours, then somewhere else in the budget, we have to make decisions of like, you know, where do we want to like shave off? Because bottom line at the end, it has to be balanced, right? Money, money coming, money coming out, it has to be the same. So I think that's also the thing, too. Like, yeah, I think, you know, training is always super important and should always be, you know, one thing that everyone should have the ability to attend to. However, you also, you know, like I said, we need to make sure that if we're going to increase ours, then it needs to be like somewhat equitable of where we're going to make the changes elsewhere in the budget as well.
I mean, I don't know. What do you think, 20% or something? I mean, that's, in the grand scheme of things, that's a couple of thousand dollars, you know?
Total.
And that accounts for not taking an increase over the last 10 years for these kind of meetings and things. And if we have to cut it later, we cut it later. We can amend the budget or something. Is that fair?
The stipend that the council does not use goes back into general funds, correct?
Mm-hmm.
So I'm not sure why we wouldn't just make a pool that we draw from it, because, you know, the first year you're in council, second year, there's a lot of training. When you get into year three and four, there may not be.
Not as much.
Much. And so, for example, I don't expect to use any of mine this year, nor did I use it last year. So it would go back into general fund. So if we just took an amount and drew from it, and then if there's something other than that that we need, we can always come back to council and ask for it. I just don't think it's going to be that much of a difference.
So to take it from a different angle, is it possible, and I know we do this in the corporate world with PTO and things of that nature, so it's, it's allocated, and you can either sell or you can opt to transfer PTO to, you know, a team member or a fellow employee if there's a need. So can that money, can I say, okay, I haven't used this, or Tale hasn't, sorry, council member, Tale hasn't used this money, can he transfer this to the mayor because he wants to go to this additional training?
I'm looking at Rachel because she's the administrator of this.
That, not in an election year, because you've got a councilman who's not going to finish an entire fiscal year, and then you've got a new, potentially new coming person who is going to need, you know, new training probably right away, like some of you did. And so during an election year, that's going to be tough, because he may be totally fine, but then that next person, you know, if there is a next person, we just don't know. So outside of an election year, we might be able to make that work, but I just, this council may feel that's fair, but maybe the next few coming on might not like that idea, and that's going to be during this fiscal year.
What if we tied it to a council position and not a person?
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
With a 20% bump for cost of inflation, is that reasonable?
Mm-hmm.
Everybody agreement? Yeah. Okay, thank you.
All right, we'll start there. And the next amendment, our version, you'll see that, so we'll plug that in. Okay, the next one I wanted to cover is, there was quite a bit of comments, obviously, on events. So there's a couple of things that we have in the legislative budget that had councils' blessing on it in the past. So you're looking at the events line item in there. These are the three expenditures currently that are making up that total budget. State of the city, we have done that for a number of years. We've been budgeting for it. Last year, I think we did a video, so talking to the mayor, I think he is looking forward to trying to keep that going or some type of other format. So 3,520 is budgeted in there. The boat parade is an event that did have hot beginnings, went and stayed over in the EDC fund. The mayor had paid for it out of his stipend one year, so it's got a past. Right now, it is on your council events because it doesn't really fit the heads and beds or the hot eligibility. And, but there was some value that was found from your past council members of keeping that sponsorship funded through the city. And then lastly, HCMCA is your Harris County Mayor and Council Association. There's been a tradition that the city of Seabrook, being a member of that association, in December will usually host that at Lakewood or at least in the city limits. So that usually accommodates with a few expenditures, giveaways, et cetera. So 2,000 is budgeted. And so these are the three items, and I'll stop and just get your input if y'all are good with keeping those or plus-minus, anything, any comments?
I thought that the boat parade had been voted by council not to fund any longer, that they had decided there wasn't benefit.
Well, I think for tonight's conversation, it's irrelevant because this is y'all's budget. So this is moving forward. I'm just looking for forward direction here. Do you want it or not?
Let's take it from the top and work our way down, maybe. The state of the city, I think communication's important, and I think we should continue some sort of something.
Has the city ever, because I know, like, area cities, they will like, they will partner with the, with the local chamber, and they'll do like sponsorships and those like, you know, kind of like sell tickets, you know, for, give everyone the opportunity to attend it, and then, you know, just as a way to kind of like relieve some of the burden on the cities.
The county, they did that for the state of the counties, the five chambers did just recently.
Has Seabrook historically ever, ever done, looked into an avenue of that of, you know, like partnering with the Rotary or the Chamber or some other group to kind of help cosponsor it, and then you kind of help to kind of have more, more of a outreach?
I think when we first started this and LeAnn was here still, we did reach out to the chamber, and it wasn't something, they, they're servicing more of the lake cities. It's not really a Seabrook chamber, so like in the LaPorte section, they have their chamber, and that works for them. And Morgan's Point, they'll do, you know, jointly state of the city. We could certainly reach out to them, and I don't know, Amanda, where are you at? Is that something that, I can't remember if you've reached out to them the last couple of years?
We've just usually been told because they're a regional chamber, they can't make that same accommodation for all of the cities that they represent, and they do try to keep a fair playing field.
Yeah, that's kind of what I recalled when LeAnn was here. So it's not typically something that they're wanting to do just for Seabrook. So we would have to still probably have quite a bit of financial contribution.
How did that, what format did that take before the video? Was it a meeting, lunch?
We have done several at Lakewood where we would do a luncheon, and that part of the 3,500 was, there was a set amount that people that can register to get into the event and once it's cut off. So that was part of that. And then it was sometimes taped for the mayor and the city manager to go through some type of format where they're delivering the state of the city. So it's, as we progress with this council, it could be a mayor-only, pre-recorded luncheon. I think it's, you know, completely up to, to you as the direction that you want to take it.
I think we leave it in the budget, and then we make a decision at some point in the future. We're still, we're on the first one, the state of the city, the state, we're going from top down.
I would leave it in it.
Leave it in, and then make a decision.
Agreed.
On how we want to approach it. Yeah, okay, because it's kind of an end of the year.
Yeah, I think it's definitely important to leave it in there, just so, you know, we can have some, some format, whether it's a video that is then like, is shared, you know, off the website and social media accounts, you know, kind of a way to let people kind of like know where we're at, you know, what's going on. And then, and it could be something, too, we could do a video and then, and then still try to have like, you know, some sort of like a public gathering somewhere for people to, people can come in, we can set up a projector or a screen somewhere to allow people.
Public works or something.
The opportunity to come.
The movie in the park.
Movie in the park.
Yeah. You got some weird movie ideas, but, I mean, you know.
With a dunk tank, yeah. Okay, so that's, that one's good. So Boat Parade, I think that we have a lot of Seabrook residents who are participating in the Boat Parade, and there are some watching places in Seabrook, at the Barge, Cabo, Villa Capri, on the point at Lakewood. at Lakewood, that people can watch the parade. I think it kind of starts in the center of the lake, more or less, and goes through the channel through Kima. So obviously, Kima's, Kima likes to call it the Kima Boat Parade, but it's not.
I mean, it's over 40 years we've had that parade.
Yeah.
It's a great, well-attended parade. I said, apps $2,000.
And we got a lot of people down here just to watch the parade, like we used to with the Fourth of July fireworks.
We really do. This, this is a great event.
Tom, is your mic, our councilman, Taleh, is your mic on?
No. But do I need it?
That'd be very helpful for everyone else.
Actually, it actually is, but thank you so much.
You're so welcome.
I will tell you once again that the Boat Lane Parade is a well-attended, if you've ever been in the traffic, you know, it's people who not only live around Seabrook, but also all of the, in our waterfront district, all has great viewing. So this is a great event to support.
I mean, I think it supports our local businesses along the waterfront for $2,000, again.
Just to be clear, this is the Christmas Boat Parade?
This is the Christmas Boat Parade that's sponsored by the Clard Lake Area Chamber of Commerce, yes.
Yep.
I think it's, I think it's fine.
And I believe all the cities around the lake participate. You know, there's usually a mayor's trophy. It's been years since, I've never been on the boat, but I've participated in, in other ways. It's a tradition. Everybody okay with that?
[inaudible]
Okay, the HCMCA thing, you know, I've only been to one, maybe two of those. We were on the boat, but that was, that was an HCA/MCA thing. And different cities take turns hosting that. And so when our turn comes
It's our turn.
We would have to, you know, do this anyway. The Christmas hosting thing was Mayor Kalubski's kind of hot button. He was the president last year. John Keeney's the president this year. I haven't spoken to him yet. But I'm happy to make an inquiry to see if they're interested in doing it here in, in Seabrook. You know, again, again, it brings all the mayors and, this is the, probably the most well-attended one, I think, of, although there are, the last, the first one I went to, there were probably 125 people there. So.
I think the end in mind of this is to keep us all together as leaders of the area. One of the things that I think is important with several of these is to keep everybody informed on what's happening in each other's backyard. So if you cancel something like this and don't participate, it creates a gap in that communication and that collaboration should we need to pull together for anything. So for me, I think it's important to keep it.
Any, any other opinions? Keep it, keep it. Thank you. I'd like to keep my phone too, please.
All right. Yeah, the, the last three bullet points just served with the highest change. On that right column, you'll see, we had a spike in telephone. And obviously, for FOIA requests and things, a lot of you elected to get your second phones. So those are being accounted for in this budget. IT software increase, we're trying to cost compartmentalize different expenses. So when we first started filming council meetings, we had some software that was tucked in, public affairs. And because it's for agenda indexing and part of the live stream process, we're moving that over to legislative. So that is not necessarily new, we're just re-categorizing. And then election expense, Rachel spoke to y'all a little bit. So the $40,000 is an earmark for looking at Harris County costs. So those are your three significant changes. So I'll stop there. If there's any other questions in this department.
I had a question on election expenses. I was, I was looking at the roll-up for that, and I saw that we paid, if I'm not mistaken, I don't have it right in front of me, like 13,000 to the Houston Chronicle. What is that?
Yeah, that's state mandated notifications we have to publish, and they're very expensive.
Don't we have a contract with like LaPorte, like a different publication, like?
No.
We used to have a contract with Bay Area Observer.
Right, and they went out of print.
And they're back in print. So when they went out of print, yeah, yeah, I know that, I know the law, like, yeah, they have to be there for a year. But my question is, when they, when they went out of print, then we signed with the Chronicle? Is that?
We started utilizing the Chronicle for the interim. We're hoping we can get a cheaper them or even a cheaper publication, but we can't. But that's what we're after, for sure. Yeah.
Thank you.
If we move to Harris County elections, does Harris County handle the notification? Or is that still something that we're responsible for?
We are still no, we have to handle notifications and publications. Yeah.
And then, is that the one where it has, you have to post it in like the, the different languages that are like prominent in your town, correct?
Yes, that's in the paper and, and, yeah.
So that's an additional over and above the 40,000?
No.
That's included?
Yes, yeah, we included it in that.
Okay, thank you.
Of what we anticipated to be, hoping it'll be cheaper if we can get a cheaper publication by then. That's what we're after, for sure. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions on the legislative department? All right. Your next department, 101, is your finance. Overall, it's a decrease of 14.24%. And this department is now taking over payroll in addition, in addition to our purchasing functions. And if you guys have toured upstairs, they also are a very tight-knit department. So they back each other up on that customer service and the front window. So it's a small but little mighty department. We've got personnel decreases. Again, that is in direct correlation with our payroll adjustments. So we are still planning to give them steps. IT software, again, this is a department we've moved and tried to take it to the appropriate department. The accounting audit is no single audit this year. So you see a significant drop in that line. And then we will be going out for a new auditing firm as that RFP is out currently. So any questions on finance? Okay. Administration, this is the department that the city management is in. And we also have the economic development personnel cost. So EDC, when the personnel cost first started in that corporation, some of you guys have heard this bill, but it used to be a corporation, truly a corporation on its own. So it ran, it had separate checks. It ran its own checks, own payrolls. It paid its own FICA, all that good stuff. It was really not cost-effective to have duplicate services. So we brought it in under our finance team. They run all of that, but to account for it in the general fund, we bring in money that the EDC transfers. But we have to put the cost somewhere. So that is baked into the administration personnel cost. So it is a transfer that's offset in the revenue side, but it does incorporate in the personnel for this department. This department also houses the city hall expenses for all the janitorial, the utilities, the maintenance. So it's the landing spot for the building in general. And then it's for all of our property and liability, flood insurance. And so that line is, as you can tell, pretty significant. And, and we keep that consolidated for everything except for our water and wastewater properties, which is an enterprise fund. Any other questions on admin? Okay. Next department is our IT department. And overall, it's a negative 11.41%. This department, we've got a couple of departments that are sending you guys some little 101s. Jimmy was one of them. This department has, I'll tell you, through the years, going from my time here of a person that we brought in once a week for three hours, to what we have now, which is three people that, and they're swamped. And every department has a technology piece. So it's an incredible department to have watched mature through the decades and where we're at today. But we've got a pretty small or a pretty big decrease that you'll see in the software and equipment. And that was in direct correlation last year. We did some pretty, he did some pretty big asks to do some projects. And so those are not getting duplicated. So that's where you see the decrease in those two lined items that they're, if you go budget to budget, that's what that is decreasing to. Any questions on IT? All right. So the next departments, as before, I'm going to just kind of run through these. Again, if there's any specific questions that y'all have noted in the budgets, please stop me. We'll start with GIS, Department 104. Overall, it's a 2.69%. This department is the department that does our drone footage, our, our GIS layers, that's on the city forward-facing maps. But they also do a ton of work internally. They work closely with Sean and Nick and Public Works to do a lot of non-public layers. So we have hundreds, probably hundreds of layers now that we are able to pinpoint all of our utilities, benches, signs, everything is, is mapped. And they're still working on additional layers. So this has been a tremendous addition several years back. And it's, it's growing as well. It's also got an emergency planning piece. And this, we went through a couple of storms that this became critically important. But what this team will do is TIDOM or the state's emergency management, immediately when we have a storm, will want to know what damage a city has sustained. GIS can go out there, ping a site. We can put in information as Public Works and community development are, are driving around, doing windshield assessments. And all of that will help feed it back up to the state. There's thresholds of damage that we have to meet for us to be able to start applying for public assistance. So just as we've been talking about the pier and Nicholas, Nicholas was a storm that that damage threshold was not met. So we didn't get assistance. So any damage that the city had, it was all on the city. There was no federal money coming in. Federal money usually is a 75-25 mix. So if we have damage, for instance, on a structure, our TML insurance will pay, but we'll also have the depreciation that can be picked up with FEMA. So it's a great thing to have this GIS tool because we can quickly be able to feed the information up to the state. And people are in disaster. It's the last thing they want to think about, and it's the first thing that we need to get out there and start assessing. So it's been a good addition to have them get into the planning team with our emergency services. This one, on expense changes, we've got a number of dues and subscriptions for Ezery, which is a major software that's very expensive. The users that they had on, they've reduced, which is help with cost. And then we've reduced some of the software that needed to go along with that. So there's a little bit of a decrease on, on that expense. Otherwise, pretty flat in that department. Department 105 is our human resources. Overall, it's a 1.31%. This department is responsible for all of our human resource functions, in addition to all of our insurance, risk management. And they handle any time, we have a worker's comp, anytime there's damage to any of our property, they're working with our insurance provider, which is TML IRP. And that's kind of a dual role that they put into place. They're also responsible, as, as you would see, with our wellness training. So, and in training in general, for leadership training. So the expense changes noted on here is trying to expand some more with our new director, Chrissy, coming on board. She's already working through some training opportunities. And we're looking at implementing a software that we had barely gotten off the ground last year, which is for evaluations to become all electronic. We were still stuck in a paper age on our evaluation. So this will help directors be able to keep it in one centralized location and be able to see year over year and get that kind of brought up to speed. Civil service is another responsibility. So the HR director serves as your civil service director and works closely with chief and the civil service commission that we put together. So if there's anything that's triggered, and aside from recruitment steps, the board and HR work closely together. 106 is our emergency services. This budget is a negative 8.47% total overall decreasing. Kevin Rogers is responsible for this one. And we've got quite a bit of a reduction. He's responsible for all the AEDs around the city. And there's a certification cycle. So we get a reprieve this year. So there's the decrease in there. We also, this year, uncovered that we had really high telephone expense. And within that telephone expense, as we started peeling back the layers, we had historically dozens of analog lines. We are under the notice that the analog lines won't be available in the future anyway. We'd held on to them in case of our fiber or electronic phone system going down. It could have been a manual backup. Obviously, we saw that recently with our telephone outage that didn't give us much leverage. So we'll keep a few of them, but that's the decrease with the telephones is bringing some of those offline completely. So I'll stop there on those three departments. Any questions on these? Okay. Next department is public affairs, Department 108. It's a pretty significant drop, 34.88%. The main driver on this one is we did take out, this is where we had the expense side of the Seabrook Festival for the total. So that was 108 that we pulled out. So you'll see from fiscal year '25 to '26, that's, that's gone. We'll talk about, we did keep the 45,000 that we typically pulled from hotel motel tags. We, we kept that 45,000 over there. So as you're reimagining an event, we do have that carved out currently right now. But we did take the expense side out. Again, we've moved some software around to make it departmental specific. And there are some additional adds for archiving and workflow subscriptions that we've added into her IT software. Any questions on that one?
The dues for the archiving, is that that $100,000 that y'all were proposing on the budget last year?
Sorry, I'm drawing like 100,000. Did we, do you know what that was?
No, I think that was for the digit, I think that was City Secretary digitizing.
Oh, the scanning project? Oh, the scanning.
So that's separate?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Legal department, we, we separated, these are several new departments that you're seeing right now. We've separated out to make it a little clearer on cost centers. Legal is kind of a younger department. It used to be under my department in, in admin. So this is kind of separated out. It makes up the prosecutor, which is separate than your municipal court. It also has a part-time assistant that's attached for the prosecutor, the prosecutor's contract, if we need language services, and also pays for your city attorney. So we did change city attorneys a year or two ago. And so those, now that we've got a trend with the new firm, is significantly lower. So we are proposing to go ahead and reduce those based on some of our actuals. So we're being able to recognize quite a bit of a savings in that department. So that's the 19.55%. And then, public safety. So Department 200, as y'all can see, this is an extremely important department that is given a lot of weight. Overall, the 5.76% is showing quite a bit of reduction in a department that size. This is still reflecting that the grade for the police officers has a 3%. This department also, when we looked at last year's and even the prior year budgets, we, Chief, you might be able to explain a little bit more on the, it's the CAD software, right, that just got upgraded? So we are in a consortium, you can elaborate on this a little bit more, consortium, and we've been holding about 150,000. We're on our last payment. And so that's a lot of the driver on that one. But if you want to explain, you guys are live on the new software?
Yes, we are. Mayor, council, good evening. There's a consortium of departments around the general area. I think there's eight or nine. It includes fire, police, everybody that works in emergency services in that region subscribes to this consortium. And we all chip in an amount that's equal to our divided up, you know, they divide up the calls, see, you know, who contributes what number of call, and then that's the percentage that we pay. It just got implemented in March of this year. And we paid our first initial payment now, and that's for the implementation. So it was a rather large payment, as Gail alluded to. After that, I think it's just over 50,000 or right around 50,000 a year for nine more years.
So that one is, that one has skewed this budget. And so if you look back on the historical, if you're, it's about 150,000 we've had to carry forwards. That's, this new software now that's in place, that 50,000 will be our, roughly our amount from year to year in that category. So any questions in general on that department? that category. So any questions in general on that department or any of these on this page? Okay. All right, the next apartment, animal control, Department 200, just under half a percent increase on this. This is predominantly flat across the board, personnel-driven. We did decrease just on actual costs, fuel slightly, and this one has, as far as the goals, as you can tell, it's got a goal of doing a project out at the center, so that one is not much change on that. DOT is also under chief. This is your commercial vehicle division. We have personnel, officers, COLA, so there's not too much of a significant change anywhere in your expense structures there. And then Department 230, emergency services. This is a slight increase, 1.52. This department is, we have Kevin Rogers split, so we do fire marshal services and we do emergency management services, so his position's a 50-50 split. This department also manages or holds the Seabrook Volunteer Fire Department expense. So we have a contract between the city of Seabrook and the volunteer fire department. The volunteer fire department will put together a budget and so your substantial line in there that you see for $802,000 is a budget that's brought over by the volunteer fire department and it's a contract that's split between the city of Seabrook and the city of El Lago. El Lago is a very small percentage of the service provided by the volunteers and so it's a small split, I think it was roughly 169, I believe, of what that's coming from El Lago in their overall expenses. So this is, 802 is the Seabrook portion of that and then we have agreed through the years that the department's use of the fire station is the Seabrook fire station, so we have in those expenses the debt portion of paying for that station. Station is almost paid for, I think that's a debt issue in, what, two years that falls off?
Yes.
Yeah, so we're almost done with paying for the station, so there'll be a sizable drop in this contract cost, but there's about $368,000 that's part of the 802 that goes to debt that's tied to the land and the station. So that one's, that one is what's the main cost driver on this. You'll notice in janitorial, we do have a janitorial company, however, we're electing this year with the director's input to bring that in-house, to try that out. We are going to go back out for janitorial services and bid that next year to try to see if we can get a decrease in that contract. Janitorial, we love our janitorial team, but there's always improvement that our employees and staff interject and so with the fire station, we're going to try to bring that in-house based on those comments and see how that works for a little while, so that's part of the decrease there. And then general maintenance, there's been a lot of discussion on the station, so with the station aging the way it is, we anticipate that we'll probably start to see those maintenance costs creep up a little bit, so that's been increased accordingly on that one. Any questions?
On DOT, fill vacancies, which vacancies are those?
We had some transition. We had a couple of retirements from that unit, so in the transition, it takes about 12 weeks to get someone trained up, so we filled one and we've still got one vacant.
Is this the commercial enforcement?
Yes, sir, it is.
That's the one I'm the most concerned about, that we need to fill. So that's the one that I'm the most interested in. When we say 10% traffic enforcement, are we saying because of the speeding that we have on 146 or the speeding we have on Toddville and Red Bluff and, so what do we, so we have a 10% enforcement, what does that mean?
No, no, that's increase what we were doing by a minimum of 10%, and that's because we were in, this year has been transitioned because we lost one and we had to get another one trained up, so we, our numbers dipped quite a bit. Our ability to conduct enforcement activity dipped significantly over those three months that he was training.
This is the goal for next year, 10% increase?
Yes, sir.
Tom, what concerns you? What are you concerned about on that?
Well, speeding.
Oh.
The speeding on Todd, we've already talked about it. Toddville and several other things, out of control, but also 146 has become a racetrack.
Yes, sir, this is just about DOT only, just commercial vehicle enforcement.
Okay, that's.
It has nothing to do with increasing regular traffic enforcement.
So by adding, by getting that position filled, we'll be better poised to go after the truck drivers that are going into areas in parts of town they shouldn't be in?
That are not, yes, that are not following the law and doing what they're not supposed to.
Perfect, thank you.
But Chief, I noticed that there has been a gradual decrease in the personnel costs. Is it just less time, other time being allocated into other areas or is it just because of this transition?
Well, we've had, we had a couple of retirements this year on resignation.
And that was it?
So, over the course of last year, we're filling up our positions now. In fact, the HR director and I are working on filling the last two, so we have two good candidates and then we'll be completely full.
Thank you.
And DOT solely handles the commercial vehicle enforcement, right? They don't respond to other calls for services?
They can respond to other calls. If they're needed, they'll always do double duty because they, they were all police officers answering calls before they went to commercial vehicle enforcement.
Okay, cool.
Yes, sir.
There's specific training for these commercial?
Yes, sir.
For inspections, right?
Yes, sir. It's all conducted by the state. It's free to the city, but it does take them out of service for three, three-week iterations of training.
So, so right now, we don't have anybody, is that correct?
No, we do have one.
We have one?
Yes, sir.
So we'll have three once we hire that additional?
We've got to get them tra, we've got to, first, the employees that we're hiring have to be trained as police officers. Once we get them through training and on the street, then we can select existing officers who are experienced on the street to go toward commercial vehicle enforcement and undergo that training.
Perfect. So ideally, once all that's done, we'll have one sergeant and two officers? Am I looking at that correct?
Yes, correct.
Thank you.
Okay, our next department is Department 240, EMS department, negative 3.97% overall. Major expense changes in this one is Chief Robert in the back has done a great job. We were having an increase in one of our agreements for oxygen, so they've located a significantly lower cost provider in that area, so a little bit of a dip in the agreement, rental agreement section, and then some cost measures in our radio maintenance that has caused a decrease as well. Department 400 is your parks department. Parks and streets, water, wastewater, all of these departments are under Brian and Jesse in Public Works, but they are separated out for cost centers. Seabrook is traditionally, because we're smaller, managed our personnel in a way that if there's something going on, streets will sometimes help parks out, parks will help streets out. It's worked out very well. Everybody's somewhat cross-trained in addition to their specialties, but these two departments are under Public Works collectively. The parks department, this is where we house the pool expenses, so at the bottom you can see that we're, expense changes, that $60,000 has been what we've budgeted for lifeguards, so we'll get back into the pool business here. On the revenue side, we didn't go into all of the detail sheets. On one of your first two sheets, that deals with revenues, but with the expense coming on, we did add our traditional revenues, which looked like to be around $20,000 for pool receipts, so those are back in your budget as well. This is all anticipation that the contract will get this thing designed, bid, and we're on a tight timeline, so if this actually happens by May, this, these two expense and revenue items are back in in anticipation of that. The pool, the way it's designed, we're anticipating with being two filtration systems. There'll be an added pool supply expense, so that's the other expense that we've adjusted for in this department. This department is also responsible, as you see at the top, we'll be talking about some decision packages that didn't get in, but there's predominantly a lot of mowing that happens in this one, so 80 acres and you can, if you guys have any type of landscaping at home, you know how difficult and how quickly grass grows, so they're on a quick cycle of doing that 80 acres and then starting all over again, especially in the summer months. So we're going to talk about a couple of asks that this department's made here in a little bit. Department 500 is your streets department, decrease overall 6.22%. Your expense change drivers, this is the department that in previous fiscal years, we've been building up to do what we've mentioned is a sidewalk replacement program. This is something, and this is certainly up for discussion with this council, I elected to take that expense from $100,000 last year to, down to $25,000. There's two different things that's driving this decision. One, we just lucked out on a fantastic bid last year. Linear foot-wise, the guys were able to knock out a ton of the two subdivisions and we got it done. However, we were not ignorant to the fact that that was probably a never-to-be-seen linear foot cost again. So $100,000 was probably not going to get us if we're realistic of what we're going to bid for the next contract and we have a list. The guys have agreed that they believe they can mobilize and still create sections and knock out lists and still make progress on our sheet and this is all based on our initial layout of the budget and how tight everything was. So this is certainly back up for discussion, but I did want to note that that's a $75,000 decrease that we've taken in there, so if this council feels strongly for discussing putting that back in, please let me know. Utilities, this is where all the streetlights get charged out to and we are seeing an increase in utility rates, so we're truing up to actual cost on that one.
Gail, I'm always not opposed to saving money, but I know some, some cities, they switch to contract services and such, you know, as a cost savings. So on the sidewalk expense, bringing it back in-house, does that take into account overtime and things of that nature?
I'll let Brian kind of speak to that. I don't think overtime's necessary, but I think job management and they've kind of talked about that.
Our guys feel confident that they can knock out this additional, they can spend that additional $25,000 on sidewalks with their current time. It should be no overtime, all during normal business hours.
Perfect, thank you. Always have to ask.
A question on a couple. On EMS, I noticed that the payroll, the salaries is, amount budgeted is dropping. Is that because of new hires and taking over or?
Mainly, if you're looking at the 26 decrease, a lot of that's that payroll adjustment that's taken in place, so their step is in there. If you're looking at the actuals, we did have quite a few vacancies, which you'll see in correlation, as you're aware, the overtime is higher than expected.
Okay.
Yep.
And then on the, are we, feel pretty confident that the pool is going to be done this fiscal year or is that kind of one of those where if it's not done, we would just have a little bit of.
I don't think we've had our first progress meeting. Okay, so I think we'll know more after progress meeting one. We know it's aggressive. It's very aggressive.
It's on schedule, it's still under design. If the funds don't get spent, they'll just go back in general fund.
Gotcha.
Great questions. All right, moving on. Department 600, this is community development that is managed by Nick, our building official. Overall, 5.46%. This is one, I just want to kind of bring, that's a cost driver in this one, and this is, we've been with the previous council, the item was brought up to look at permitting software. So Nick has, between Nick and our IT and our finance team, they have spent a lot of time researching different software packages. Every department has a need to make sure that this works and works not only for the public, but internally for finance, IT side of it, and so I think we've landed on a software that the majority of people are happy with, but we are traditionally using our enterprise software, which I think it was well under $10,000. For the permit software that we're looking at, the first year would be $39,500 to get it started and so that $39,500 is in this budget to do the first year implementation. After that, it'll go down to $24,000. However, I think, and Nick, I may put you on the spot of just kind of talking about the software in general and what it would offer for the public?
Thank you. We, Mayor and Council, we went out to, we've spent about two years looking at various software packages and what we're looking to go to is a web-based software that would really provide one place for our customers and residents to be able to go and not only be able to submit for permit, but also manage their permitting and inspection process online. So that's, that's the biggest part of this, but it also makes the communications with the customers and archiving of all of our information together in one place. So it, we're really hoping it's going to also help us greatly improve our efficiency.
I love this. Been asking for it. I just have one, but does this have any integration into like software that we use within the city already?
It's not directly into, well, I mean, it doesn't directly integrate with our enterprise software, but that's, that software is really more for, you know, like the water department, billing and finance. It will, you know, it'll basically be accessed through our web portal and there are some opportunities for some, some other connectivity, but it, we, our website would primarily be directing to their services.
Thank you.
Are the, are the plans archived now electronically or would that be a part of this process too, where the plans are tagged with the permit electronically for reference, that sort of thing?
So currently, we work under a number of different softwares to try to keep, keep track of all of our information, but most of that happens outside of our software and then needs to get attached into our archiving solution, whereas this really integrates with Microsoft Office and other softwares and also offers online plan review. So that, you know, when we're looking across multiple departments, someone will submit online one place and all of us that need to look at it would be notified, be able to do reviews and then it also collects all of our comments and sends them back unified to the customer.
So the investment is going to make it easier for people to do business with the city, which is the goal, right?
Very much so. The other thing is that on the other side of that, you know, our current web portal for customer services on the building side is very limited, so there are users that can go on, schedule, schedule inspections and when we, as we've been trying to put that information into the system, then they're able to see those notes, but unfortunately, with the software that we've been trying to work with over the last two and a half years, it has, it's been kind of hit or miss, whereas as we move forward, really everything that, that happens within the system, the customer can see their side of it, while we're still able to manage it on the backside, but we're not having to go through all of the work that we're having to do right now. If they send something, you know, via email, then we have to attach that back into the software and then communicate back to them also through email, whereas the system's really managing a lot of that interaction.
Are there, are there any areas, cities using the software that you're proposing?
Not directly here. It's a smaller vendor. We've talked to one or two other cities in Texas. The software package that we're also going with is not only managing us, but also code enforcement and will offer online planning and zoning, project management.
Excellent.
Sorry, I have one more question. Is there opportunity within the software for like future automation and things?
I'm sorry, what?
Future automation?
There is, there's a lot of automation built into the software and the vendors also working with, there are some other automated softwares that we've looked at over the years, over the last year or so, that provide some automation for communications in like Outlook to provide standardized responses for a lot of this, and I know that the vendor's currently in communications with. And I know that the vendor's currently in communications with, with some of those other vendors.
Thank you again.
All right, and courts, excuse me, Department 700, 1.45%. I think everybody may have heard, I don't know how broad it is, but Jessica is our court director right now. She has accepted another position with the City of Pearland, so she will be leaving at the end of this week. We have Christina that's served as our assistant director of court, and so she will be hopefully talking with the judge soon. So we'll see how our next personnel change happens there. But anyway, the court department has been in good hands. The judge expense on this department, we're taking it off actuals, dropped that just a little bit. Bank fees, we will talk about this more on the water side. You might have seen it in some of the other departments. I think Nick's department, yeah, we've got a note on there as well. So when we do electronic payments, there is a bank fee for those electronic payments, and we have to create a cost center. Some of our fee structures account for bank fees. So we, like, when we talk about the water fees here in a little bit, there's a way that we have to calculate what makes sense to be based on water cost and all the things that go along with producing a water bill. And it makes sense that those are kind of baked in the back. This court department, as you can tell, this is something that we also have to account for that cost. And so it's, it's sizable, much more sizable when we get to enterprise fund, but if there's any questions, that, that is for, a lot more people are taking advantage of making electronic payments. Okay. Kind of getting into something else here, so I'll just stop on general fund departments. Any questions? Anything I've missed? Okay. Okay. At the end of the day, when I've met with all of these fine directors, there's always things that I can't afford to, to put in there. We've talked about that you've got a tax roll that's still yet to come, so that can swing things pretty drastically. And this is a proposed budget, so you've got a couple more meetings. Things can change. You guys may have some priorities we need to look at. But these are what I call the decision packages. And if it's going to be a significant change to these directors' departments, they're required to put in a decision package. And then if there's enough money, then those I can consider putting in. And this is what did not get put in this year. At the bottom, I'll kind of start there. Positions on a small city, it's difficult. Sometimes we've been able to get those in and sometimes not. So our public works, the jobs I think are increasing. We've, we've had some retirements, so quite a few asks in that department. But we've got a street maintenance position. This will be for a new full-time employee. Our IT department, as I mentioned, is expanding. As you've seen, IT, every department has some type of specialized software now. Our police department has units in every one of the vehicles. There's just not a piece of any department now that doesn't have a technology piece attached to it. So Jimmy and I meet on a monthly basis, and I think he's up to like 1,200 work orders between the three department personnel. So this was not able to get fulfilled right now, but there definitely is, is starting to see a pretty high increase on the workload in that department. Parks, we've talked about the number of acres. They are also in parks responsible for all the city events. So I did ask Brian, as part of the events line item in that department 400, this department's responsible for all of those city events that, that you guys attend, just to name a few. Paul Parade, Fall Suite, Veterans Day, tree lighting, breakfast with Santa, tree planting, trash mass, Easter conversion, Easter excursion, excuse me, trail adventure, flag retirements, third grade field trips, kite silver pine gully, Memorial Day movie nights, Fourth of July, kidfish, just to name a few. So that, you know, is part of parks maintenance. You see those guys, they do all the setup, they all do the tear up, they do the cleanup. So that's part of the significance in that department that we're starting to see, that is just much, it's much more than mowing. We're starting to kind of grow our events menu. And then we have a reclassification ask, and this is moving up crew leads in the parks department. So those, those are reoccurring. Those are harder to come by because once we approve those and put them in the budget, they're, they're reoccurring. And as you can see, benefits are attached to that. And so when we commit to that, we know we're committing not only to that base salary, but to step increases, benefit increases. So we have to be very careful that, that we think our projected revenues can support those. One-time expenses, this is where you can get a little creative based on the priority of these needs. So this budget before you, on your beginning page, there's a line item that's called prior year expense. And roughly right now, because of vacancies and different service contracts, we're running a pretty significant forecasted surplus of over $500,000. We talked about what happens when you run good. The money goes back into the savings. We can certainly do that. We can certainly have a conversation also, and we have used it in the past, where we can identify one-time expenses, move that surplus, anticipate a surplus in as a revenue, and take care of those one-time expenses. So those are not input right now. And in this first version, this is just meant to kind of educate you on, on the asks that I don't have in, but that is certainly one area that I may look at when we meet again. So digitizing city hall records, this is from the city secretary's office. The $100,000 that Angela was talking about, we did have that as a larger, Rachel had a larger package that we were looking at, how much would it cost for all digitizing? So we've got records here at city hall and at public works. And so it was a huge package. This is kind of looking at it in a phased approach, and this will be city hall. So Rachel, I don't know if you want to talk anymore about the scanning, just please? So this will be a combination. She's working with a couple of vendors to try to figure out what would be the most cost-effective, but it would be scanning and then hopefully getting an updated software that would help with that area. Mowers, so 80 acres, these mowers, they get, we have a fantastic mechanic onboard that can really kind of take a shoestring and make things happen. But the guys are coming to me with the mowers in streets, and there's a real need. So the two mowers, $38,000. IT, we have cameras that are getting aged, so in and around all the public work centers, roughly $9,330. And then the big one, we did not get enough time, but we will talk about in our special funds. We have two gigantic funds that are set up that I'm super proud of, and they take care of all of our general fund vehicles, trucks. And we have the public safety replacement fund that take care of all the, the police department vehicles as well. And we've got ambulance, and at the end of each one of your budgets in these departments, you'll see the amortization line. That amortization is going back into those replacement funds. And what it's done is allow us to set in a schedule without having to spike your budgets that will be able to replace these vehicles. So we've taken care of vehicles. Mobile equipment, which excavators in that category, we haven't done that yet. So we were, we were hoping to look at possibly that stabilization fund to start that up, and we didn't this year. So this ask is on this line to just start the conversation. They're saying that this is 20-plus years?
Twenty-plus years.
It's over a 20-year vehicle, or device that they have working out there. So it's, they're giving me notice. They could probably limp along, but not too much longer. So this would be another potential one-time expense, and then hopefully we can discuss maybe setting up a amortization schedule for that device. And then public affairs software, they are looking to do a workflow management software, and that's not in their budget right now. So one-time expense, a little over $171,000. Tonight, we won't get into this specifically. Again, we'll wait till we get those final tax roll in and version two. I may make some recommendations, but any questions on these?
Are these any, any particular order?
They are not, they're not prioritized in any way.
And then the reoccurring, the 59,000, that's the total budget here with like salary, benefits, retirement, everything, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Did we use the stabilization fund to buy two mowers for $38,000 last year in the budget? Wasn't that approved?
We moved in that, in the very back of y'all's budgets, there's that detail, it's a $175,000 and some change. With the interest that built on that $800,000, I think we were over $900,000 last year. So we did move, there was two or three different things, that same kind of exercise here. Council approved moving $175,000 out of stabilization fund to pay for one-time expense.
And, and two mowers were part of that?
Correct. Yep. And I don't, in general, how many mowers do y'all have? I mean, we're...
Well, there's, there's the park mowers for last year.
Mm-hmm.
What's happened in the, in the past is whenever we get new...
You want to come up there? I don't think we can hear you.
Our, our street department gets all that, has been getting, has been getting all the hand-me-downs. So when the parks got two new mowers, the two worst mowers from parks went to streets. We're trying to get rid of that. We're trying to say, okay, when parks gets two new mowers, those go to auction, and then street can get their, oh, two new, they can get their two, they can get their two new mowers, and they'll have their 20, 20, 10 to 20 life lifespan. That's what we're trying to do. So it's actually for streets for this year, and they move all the right-aways.
And are y'all responsible for the, the mowing and landscaping of the, the expansion areas? Y'all are taking that on?
Oh, 146.
Y'all, y'all...
So the, the plan on that, we, we do need to bid that as a landscaping project, but no, was not, intent was never to put it on public works. We would probably need to hire two more people if we, if we went that direction, but we are looking to bid that. And again, just, that's a good segue, but the 12 months just started. So the landscape company under Tech Dot is responsible for this for 12 months. The mowing that you're seeing right now along the corridor is the Tech Dot standard. So all the grassy areas really didn't have anything to do with the landscaping. It's just the Tech Dot right-aways. Tech Dot will only come about three to four times a year. So when we start talking about bidding this, it will probably look like a tier system of some sort that we'll need to determine how well-groomed do we want the corridor? EDC was a funding partner at the beginning of this, and they can do maintenance. So I had had a conversation with the corporation to see if, just to kind of prepare them at the end of 12 months, that they may be asked to be a funding partner. But obviously, for a corridor that size, we're looking well over $100,000 probably a year at maintenance.
But we won't need to address that until 12 months from now?
Correct. Yeah, I think this fiscal year, we're good, but probably somewhere in the middle of this fiscal year, we're going to have that conversation.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Another thing that we will, I'm just going to put as a placeholder right now until we get some additional figures in. With the police station, internally, we've been talking about, you guys, most of you toured the station. With the new station and the bonds not getting passed, there's obviously some deferred maintenance in that building that needs to be handled. And so chief has worked up a number of things that we've talked about. City Hall upstairs, there's a few things as far as updates that we're looking at. So these will be two projects that are not currently on the CIP that I would like to bring back to discuss pending where we are with the surplus and where we're at with the tax rolls. So again, you're, you're running right now over, I think it's over $600,000 on that front page is what we're anticipating your surplus for this current fiscal to be. So one of the other probably proposals that I'll make at the next meeting is that we earmark some funds for these two updates. And priority being in the police station, again, you guys have, this has been a recent tour that I know that you guys have taken. So there's just some things that if they're going to be in that station for the next seven to 10 years, there needs to be some updates. We are taking care of our EMS and the fire station with those alternate bids, so they're, they'll get quite a bit of updates in the fire station. But obviously, you know, now we need to shift our attention to this building. So I'll probably make a pretty significant ask, and we'll, again, don't have to tackle it tonight, but the surplus will probably be an ask to swing towards updates for these two facilities. Any questions on that? No? Okay. All right. So I know, let's see, how's the time? We'll get into a little bit on the tax rate. We're going to get into enterprise, and then depending on time, we may do special funds, or if you guys want to recess, we'll get to that point, you can let me know. So right now, again, we're working off preliminary roles. Some of you just got back from TML training, so this is fresh on your mind, but there's two components to your tax rate. When we get through all of this discussion, the really hard decision will land on your lap of what is the tax rate for your citizens going to be for your property tax. There's two components, M and O. What we just went through, what it takes to operate general fund is what goes into your M and O. And that is completely different than your debt payments or your sinking fund, INS that we refer to it. So these are the two components of the total tax fund. No new revenue is a term or NNR that if you're at different elected official events, you'll start to hear this budget season, the NNR terminology slapped around. So that is something that is the very bottom of the tax that you can calculate, that will calculate a tax rate that will derive the exact same revenue on the properties on that tax roll from the previous year. So in other words, if Harris County increases your appraised value, say $300,000 home to $360,000, the calculation that we're getting here is that the tax rate goes down so that you as a taxpayer will not have to pay any more. That's the no new revenue. So effectively, you're not paying any additional increase. Your value's gone up, the city's tax rate on the O and M goes down. Then we'll talk about the cap in here in a minute, but that's, that's the, the beginning part and the, the very lowest rate that we can look at. The VAR, or the voter approval rate, is the very highest that you can go to. So there's a three and a half percent cap for cities that you can take that base, and you can incrementally go up to three and a half percent. If you go over the three and a half percent, then we have to have an election, and you have to ask your voters, can we raise your property taxes by more than three and a half percent? So the three and a half percent and then the IS rate gets to the voter approval rate. So we cannot go over the voter approval rate. You'll be happy to know we never come to this meeting or the subsequent meetings asking for that, and hopefully never will. But that's the top of the ceiling. So the three and a half percent cap, you'll hear us talk about the VAR and the NNR. Your current rate is just under 46 cents, 40.455165. Get very, these are worksheets that Mike has to work through the state, so that's why the decimals go out so far. So the, under your current rate, there's the two, 35 cents is your M and O, 10 cents is your debt rate. The estimated, and I emphasize estimated because this may change from this meeting to the next one, again drastically, but it gives you a starting point of what we're talking about with the letter that we have in hand. So right now, it looks like it would go from 45 to 47. Your O and M would drop somewhere around 33, and with the new debt coming on, that portion would go to approximately 14. And again, all of this is preliminary, but it gives you a correlation of, of how that works, so. Any questions on tax rate? Again, tonight's not really the emphasis here, but it will be at your next meeting. Okay. A few more slides. This is your enterprise fund. These, this is your next largest fund, and after we get here, we'll, we'll stop and see where we are on time. This is where your water and your wastewater rates and your sanitation lie. For those, I think everybody's aware, but the City of Seabrook contracts with the City of Pasadena. The City of Pasadena is a partner with the Southeast Water Plant. That's where the water comes from, but we are not a direct partner with the Southeast plant, so we have to contract through the City of Pasadena. We just ended a 40-year contract and renegotiated that in 2020. So we are still under the umbrella of the Pasadena contract. We do have items within that contract that we are, we must abide by. So in other words, if there is significant capital improvements, then we will typically see a rate increase. Right now, there is nothing that we're aware of as far as rate increases. We've finished... We've finished a pretty significant increase over the last five years, so we're flat right now pending anything that comes back from them. And we are at the end of five years, and we do a five-year study, or study every five years on the water and the wastewater. And what it does is, again, a third party comes in, looks at all of our administration costs, all of our capital costs, a number of variables, our water contract, puts that all into a formula to make sure that we are justified by the community for the fee structure that we put out. And so that is coming up. You do that every five years. So in the enterprise fund, you'll see $100,000, and that's to do water, wastewater. And then when we get into special funds, there's an impact fee as well. And so when new builds happen, you pay an impact fee for water and wastewater. That's another study that has to be done to make sure that you're doing those fee structures according to law. So those three different studies are put into this budget this year, and that's in your water department. For this overall fund, there is a requirement to do 15% in your reserves. So we have 1.6 in required reserves and just under a percent that is left with unreserved ballots. Again, this expenditures on this department are your water, your wastewater, your sanitation, and then our utility billing department. And your expenses, service contracts, this is the city of Pasadena and waste management predominantly that run this one. Water sales, and this is a kind of inverted, but it's water sales of whatever we are budgeting in that. We're projecting what the water usage and thus the sales are going to be. And then we have an expense side of that that we're paying the city of Pasadena. So it correlates. Sewer service charge, and then again, waste management in your sanitation charge. The three departments here, your 902 is your water. Overall, negative 8.74%. This does also have, this is the apartment I mentioned that has $100,000 for the studies. And we've decreased building maintenance. And then we've adjusted the water expense closer to actual. So this is one of those expenses that we don't know how much water usage in the future is going to happen, and we've looked at the trend on the actuals, and we're just bringing that down a little bit closer to actuals. This doesn't really affect anything because we marry up the revenue with the expense. So if we do anything to those two, it's a net difference. Utility billing, this is the department that actually is responsible for sending out the water bills, works with Public Works. And this one is, as you can see, we've got a $40,000 hike in bank fees on this one. So we are seeing an increase of people paying their utility bills via electronic payment, and there is a cost for doing that. On this particular fund for bank fees, though, we are, with these studies, making sure that those costs, anticipated costs are captured with the fee structure. So this is a pretty significant bump. However, this one does account for it in our fee structure. And then we did move some software into this department. Our sewer department, this is the department that's responsible for the wastewater plant. And now that we're completely online with the new plant, we're starting to see reality and actuals in our expenses. So the plant is, we've got redundancy. If y'all toured the plant, you can see that the basins, there's a lot of redundancy when they take you through that tour, that they'll show you. If they're cleaning a basin, it automatically diverts to another basin. So those duplicities, we didn't have at the old plant. And so there is a chemical cost on that that we're seeing. So there's, that cost has been raised. The sludge is something that was highly used at the old plant, so you're seeing a decrease in that one, and we're shoring that one up as well. Water and wastewater rates, again, we'll wait for, we've got this fee study tapped in. Right now, our volume costs for both water and wastewater have not been touched at this version. All right. So I'll stop right there. Questions? And then I'll open up to the floor as far as how much y'all want to go on into the special funds, or we can certainly wait till the next meeting.
So we have, at the next meeting, we could postpone special funds to them, and then we'll, maybe we might know what the HCAD, but probably not.
So Mayor, I know you and I talked, you're going to be out the 30th. We currently had scheduled to do the following Tuesday, the 29th. However, we did do sort of a conflict on our scheduling in this room. Sean will be having a building standards review the 29th in here. So we could do it a couple different ways. If you wanted to patch in and be remote, we could push it later to the Wednesday or Thursday. We would probably certainly have Harris County rolls in by Wednesday or Thursday. Or we could target Monday and hope that we got them in by Monday. But we typically, Mike's rolling his eyes. But guys, he's been here many a times till 2 AM. They just love to drop it in his inbox at midnight. So that's the only risk for a Monday meeting that we have. So I think definitely be up to you guys. We've also talked about that we could have this off-site, but we don't obviously have any recording equipment to do it if we shifted that over to Public Works. So, you know, we could do a Tuesday meeting still, but we'd need to look for an alternate site.
Is there a date when we would know for sure that we would have the county information? Midnight on the...
I can let you answer that.
I have another question for you after you answer this one. Lucky you.
Only one question.
It's only going to take one.
So I did receive an email stating that Harris County should receive the rolls on the 25th, which aligns with us likely getting them on Monday, but there's no guarantee. I think the law says they have to have them out the 31st of July, but I can't, I can't confirm whether or not we'll get them Monday. Best guess is we'll have them on Monday, and I can do the calculation, and then we can hold the meeting on whatever day after that.
I'm out of town the 30th through the first, 30th through the second, I think. So thank you for not having a meeting on my birthday, the 29th. I mean, we could do it offline on the 29th, I guess, still, maybe, I mean, at Public Works, but we'd have to have some kind of video equipment brought in. Or we could postpone it for another day. Buddy could be the chair, and I could remote in from Las Vegas.
You're going to bounce a budget out there?
All of it on red, yeah. Okay. So here's my question on the fees. It's one question. Are the majority of those fees coming from client, customers paying with Amex and Discover?
No, we do not take American Express or Discover. We only take Visa or MasterCard.
That's what I was hoping we would say, but I wasn't sure if we were taking that. Okay. I asked you that.
And really, those increases are, I mean, we're at like 2.8% on average of what...
That's not bad.
That's not bad. Now, some of the cards, you get the detail, some people are paying 13%, but the net effect for all involved is about 2.8%. The fees have gone up only because we've gone from 400, or 4.5 million annually to this year, we're going to be well over, what appears to be well over 6 million in online payments and credit card payments. So that's the real driver, not, it's just people are paying with their credit cards now.
Okay. Thanks. That's what I wanted.
Okay. Then we have, let's make two, let's make the first decision first. Do we agree to recess the balance of this meeting to the next meeting? Because the other thing is actually an agenda item.
Jim, I actually, if, I'm sorry for interrupting. I have just a question for Gail regarding the study. Is that state-mandated, or is that city charter? Or what is the precedent for that five-year study?
It's state, right?
Okay. Thank you.
I apologize. Anybody else have any, anything else? Okay. So are we in agreement then to recess the balance of this meeting for the next meeting? If yes, then we'll go to the next agenda item, which is determining when the next meeting is. Is everybody okay with that? Okay.
Good.
All right. So we're, right, we'll recess this meeting, this budget session at 7:57. Agenda item 2.3, discussion regarding the dates for future budget meetings. What works for everybody? My wife said I could, you know, remote in, so I have permission. Buddy will chair the meeting as mayor pro temp, since I'm not physically going to be here. Somebody give me a date.
Any date other than the first Wednesday of the month? I'm good.
It has to be before the first. So, sorry, let me get a calendar here.
So Tuesday, or, excuse me, Wednesday, the 30th or Thursday, the 31st?
Correct. So I'm flying in Wednesday. So, I mean, for me, that would be the easiest because starting Thursday morning at 7:30, I'm in meetings Thursday, Friday, Saturday most of the day. So if Wednesday, the 30th, works for everybody, that would be great for me. Is that okay?
I wish, ma'am.
Yep.
All right. So the next meeting, the next budget session will be on July 30th at 6 PM. And there being no further business, this meeting is adjourned at 7:58. Thank you, everyone.